I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Athens City Regional Planning Commission, pardon me. It's a little after 12:00 and we have an acquorum, a quorum with five people present, three, four, four people. Can't count either. All right, then I'm going to turn the meeting over to the mayor and to Andy, the Service Safety Director.
Okay, so this morning, this is a little bit different than our typical Planning Commission meeting in that we are going to hold, in concert with the Planning Commission meeting, a Community Development Implementation Strategy Meeting. And this is a requirement for administering the Community Development Block Grant Program inside the city of Athens, both the allocation program, which is specific to the city, as well as some of the other CDBG programs that may or may not be able to be awarded in the city, and those are all competitive. The allocation is not competitive, as long as you're eligible, you can compete for those funds. But part of being eligible for any of this money is a Community Development Implementation Strategy Meeting. We haven't always done these in this particular forum. We have to have a public session of some sort to do these, and this is really an idea-gathering session to look at potential projects that are inside the eligible zones, and those zones are part of the census tracts and then the census blocks where a certain percentage of the LMI, of low to moderate income reside. And so, we can't just build something anywhere, we've got to build it in specific places. And so, what we'd like to get out of here is at least the beginning of a list for potential projects that could be funded via the CDBG program, as well as other sources of funding if necessary. A quick overview, you've got an agenda in front of you for the CDIS, and I'm going to cover the first two items, and then we'll kind of get into the specific potential grants that are out there and potential projects. So, the overview of this program, CDBG provides local governments with funding for community development for both infrastructure improvements and economic development projects. It addresses locally identified needs that are eligible, community development block grant activities, and qualify under the national objective of low to moderate income benefit for elimination of slum and blight, so you have to spend the money towards those goals. The community development program includes competitive set-aside grants for several different areas, specifically downtown revitalization, neighborhood revitalization, and critical infrastructure. So, the city of Athens has effectively used the Community Development Block Grant Program for several projects, or for a portion of several projects, over the last decade. I'll quickly run over those, what we've done, and where we are right now with our existing allocation. Using the allocation program, in 2011, we funded a portion of the Grosvenor Street Slip Repair Project. In 2012, we funded a portion of the Columbus Road and Lancaster Street Rehabilitation Project that included sidewalks, a water line, and pavement along Lancaster Street, and then pavement and widening along Columbus Road. That was a much larger program than the CDBG money funded, but, or a much larger project, rather, but I think CDBG maybe paid for about a tenth of that project, maybe a little less. In 2013, we rehabilitated a house on Richland Avenue that was then, that is currently used by the Metropolitan Housing Authority for administering their program. We actually accessed a different funding stream in 2014 called the Critical Infrastructure Program, which is one of the competitive grants under CDBG, and that was for a portion of the Depot Street Lift Station. The Depot Street Lift Station is an important piece of community infrastructure on the west side of the city, moving the sewage of about a third of the city and a few areas to the outside, and is really pretty important, and that paid for about a quarter of that project. 2015, we improved Franklin Avenue with the CDBG allocation money. In 2016, we built a sidewalk on West Union Street out near the VA. In 2017, the allocation formula project, or program changed to be an every-other-year grant, as opposed to every year, and so we didn't do anything in 2017. And then in 2018, we applied for and received and haven't conducted yet the Kimes Reservoir Rehabilitation Program. So, those are the different things we've done in the past, and kind of gives you an idea of the programs we've done before. Quickly, we have an overview of eligible CDBG programs, both the allocation, as well as some of the other ones, and I don't know, sir, if you'd like to talk about some of the specific types of grants that are out there.
Sure. Does everyone in the audience have this document in front of them with the agenda? If you do, what I'll do is I'm just going to truncate this, put it into clef note version for the six programs. The allocation program, which has funds available, $150,000, and this is for projects that include public facilities, public facilities, public services, housing, economic development, fair housing activities. The downtown revitalization program, these are for the central business district improvements to eliminate slum and blighted areas, but also create and maintain permanent private sector opportunities. That funding availability for up to $300,000. The Neighborhood Revitalization Program, as the name implies, is for neighborhood redevelopment or developments, has funds available, $500,000, up to $500,000. Critical Infrastructure, as Service Safety Director just indicated, that we have used that in the past for projects that are designated, they're designed to assist with applicant communities with high priority, single-component projects, is roads, flood and drainage, and other public infrastructure improvements. Residential Public Infrastructure Program to improve safety and reliability of drinking water within municipality. Economic Development Program for, as the name implies, economic development loans and public infrastructure improvements directly related to job creation and retention. That has $500,000, and I skipped over the residential public infrastructure, that has $750,000, highly competitive. And as the Service Safety Director indicated, a lot of this is all predicated upon the, in terms of eligibility and LMI data. I think we have that information. The executive assistant, Patty Whitmer, is going to put that up for you. Initially, when we were looking at this, we were looking at the census tracts with the 2010 data, and luckily, in reaching out to Jessica Dine, who's here today, we came up with the more accurate data. So, there's the census tracts, and there's blocks within those census tracts, to which you may have that in your packet as well, a few pages back into your packet, where it actually breaks things out in terms of eligible, not only the track, but the eligibility of the blocks within those tracts. That's important to look at and look at closely because it shows the current percentage of LMI. I believe, well, the header says 2015, so this is the more accurate data that we have at hand in comparison to what was the 2010 census.
This is actually according to the GIs map, which I have available. People want to get more detailed. But the ones that are highlighted here are ones that are at 50% or above, and those are the areas that are eligible for funding.
So, the first starting point, we're really talking about projects in the heart of the city, the west side, the near north side, and a portion of the southwest side in the Blackburn Road/Kimes Nursing Home Facility area. Those are really the portions of the city that are eligible, but then we'd have to, if we have an idea that comes up, we need to zero in specifically on that spot and see if that is indeed inside one of those blocks, that's inside one of those eligible tracts.
What you're looking at on the screen right now is, are the census tracts? And Patty, do we also have the image of the tracts with blocks in it as well? If not, that's fine. It should be in your handout for everyone who's here, correct. The image that you have in your handouts.
They don't have a map with it broken out, but I have the, I can go online and...
There it is.
I can click on areas.
Basically, the pink.
Pink and orange.
Okay.
Oh. You guys probably can't see that. But anyway, this is highlighting one of the block groups of, it says block group one. I think that's 9732 Census Track. I'm not sure, but the type right here is all garbled. You can see it a little closer. This is where we're doing the Kimes Project.
So, as we ask for ideas, I guess, you know, a little context, having done this for over a decade, the money that comes from CDBG for infrastructure projects is not a lot, and often you end up to have any substantial impact at all, having to supplement that money with other local funds to do. And that's for the allocation projects, and those are the ones that, you know, it's kind of guaranteed, as long as we meet the eligibility criteria, we can apply that allocation money towards a project. For the competitive projects, there's still not a lot of money, and there are a lot of work. So, we want to make sure, and I'm not saying that we don't want to go after these, because we'll go after external money whenever we possibly can, we want to make sure that it's competitive, and that it's a very competitive project, and really meets the criteria, because otherwise, it's a tremendous amount of work for something that you're not likely to be able to get, and it's not a huge amount of money in the first place. And so, you know, while, you know, all ideas are equal, some ideas are more equal than others as we go forward in coming up with potential projects for applications.
So, I know that we have both of our engineers, the director of engineering and public works, Bob Hetty's here, as well as Jessica Dine. I don't know if you want to go to the podium and talk about a couple of the projects that you had stewing, had been stewing on.
Thanks, everybody, for coming today. Yeah, we just have a preliminary list, I guess, as Service Director Stone had said, that, you know, a lot of these, we have to go back and kind of look at them, are they competitive, if we get into those competitive dollars? So, every other year, we do have money there, and we usually use it to contribute or leverage other dollars to make the project happen. You know, some of the things we've done in the city, we've got some sleeping giants with our water infrastructure. If you're on College Street today, you'll see we have some sleeping giants with our sewer as well, so there's an opportunity there to do some valve improvements for critical infrastructure. When Highland Reservoir, we have trouble shutting it down if we have a major water break, so that's one of the projects we might look at for, be competitive in that critical infrastructure. We go in and install more valves and make our system a little more robust, be able to zone it off. Same way with, we have some infiltration and inflow issues with our sewers, and that's going to be, as we take in more flows, and as the city grows, and as the county comes to us, we're going to have to address those. So, there's an opportunity there that I think we can be competitive on those projects. You know, some other things, you know, just aging equipment, our telemetry systems, our remote sites, our lift stations, our water station to talk to each other, that's another one that we'll be updating here in the future, and it'll be over half a million dollars if we update all 50 of those remote locations. Other, you know, opportunities, as we do West Union Project, you know, those areas around Richland, Schaefer, those are in a qualified area, so we may be able to use some of this money to offset some improvements there. The west side, you know, there's been talk about, you know, West Washington, Schaefer, Brown, those are areas where if we could look at some neighborhood development possibly and do some accessibility improvements, you know, whether that's making, taking some of the stairs out, some of the sidewalks where we can, it's not going to be in a lot of places, and then adding other accessibility routes for pedestrians. Let's see. And then there's other areas that don't get a lot of attention, the Mill Street area. You know, we've done some work there in the past, but drainage and sidewalk projects, those are some other things that might be eligible. Don't have anything in, you know, specific worked out, but just as we get in more areas, you know, the Kern Street, just recently looked at a curb there and realized that Mill could use some work. So, finding that money out of our regular budget sometimes is difficult, or this could be an outside source. And then the well field, we may be competitive in one of the, in the residential public infrastructure program we haven't been in the past, because there's some real specifics to that program, I think well abandonment. We have well field, it's the river, with our increased incidence of flooding, it seems to be eroding more, and we're looking at some projects there, and there's an abandoned line there from wells that we don't use anymore that we probably need to address in the near future, so there's an opportunity there. But those are just some of the things we have. None of them are definitive, but maybe a good topic to start the conversation. Mayor, do you have any questions while I'm still up here?
No, I'm really glad that you did address, though, you know, that we can use some of this to correct some of the accessibility issues that we see around the cities. I don't know if anyone in the audience is aware, I think some of you are, that we do still have some old sidewalk infrastructure, that because of the topography, that there had to be steps put in to be able to access that, and at least looking at it and thinking about different ways we can address issues such as that.
Yes, specifically Stu Mack in the Sider House area, we're doing some traffic counts there now to look at a crosswalk. Mid-block crossings are, can be problematic, but sometimes it makes sense as well, so we're looking at that area specifically, and that's one, I know there's a few stairs there that we may be able to address. You know, Second Street, we're never going to fix that hill, that topography, but, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think at this point in time, we'd like to open up the podium for anyone who wants to bring up an idea, a concern, a comment, anything. If you do, we know who you are, Madam President, but still, if you would state your name and your address.
Chris Nysley, 24 Old Coach Road, so on the south side. And I hear Service Safety Director Stone's comments that the asset allocation might be not easier money to be had, but not quite as competitive as some of the other projects. And the other idea behind the asset allocation, unless we've got a good one for accessibility in one of the particular neighborhoods, might also be that it might benefit, you know, as Mr. Hetty had stated, you know, some of the telemetry and things might benefit a wider part of the population. Two questions. What's the deadline? Are they all rolling revolving deadlines? Are we looking at next month? Are we looking at next week? Because that determines too what kind of projects might be considered, and if you can develop them in time.
You want to talk?
Next year.
Next year? Oh, so we do have some time.
For the allocation funds, we apply every even year to change in 2017.
Then the other ones are rolling, if I'm not mistaken.
I know that, I'm not, sorry.
Right now, we are applying for the Critical Infrastructure Program specifically for de-watering equipment at the Wasteland River Plant. We've applied a couple times and have the application kicked back, and we actually just passed legislation here recently again in council to allow us to apply again. Hopefully, a third time will be a charm, and we will get funded under that Critical Infrastructure Program, because we think that de-watering equipment will serve not only the city of Athens, but the wider area with the upcoming county sewer project, and we think we have a strong case for that one as critical infrastructure, so hopefully that will get funded. But I thought the other ones were...
I think they're all, I think the reason, and I could be wrong, I think the reason we are, we were invited to continue to apply again for the critical, because we started the process last year.
I got you.
But I'm pretty sure that most, all of these are even your...
Okay.
So, we're looking at 2020 for applying, so it gives us time to...
Sure. So, the other comment that could be made probably for the completes, or the sidewalks and accessibility, number one, an important issue, but it would also dovetail with the city's work on the complete streets programming, so that might be something. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. Of any of the projects that we've talked about so far this afternoon, are, do any of them fall into the economic development pot, and are, do we have any specific ideas for any of the future projects that are economic development related?
You know, other than, other than the potential crosswalk or sidewalk corrections near the Stuart McDonald Building and the whole West Washington, that whole area and corridor, the others really, really aren't in terms of economic development.
No, we've never gone after the money to, like, do a private site, you mean? Like, fix a building to be able to house a business, or buy machinery, or something along those lines?
Yeah.
In my time here, I don't think we've applied for one. Do you have an idea?
No, I just wanted to know if that was, if the stated projects were ever considered economic development or not, and, you know, to kind of guide the conversation perhaps. And then also, is the economic development money all competitive, I assume, or is that allocation money as well?
I would imagine that they're all competitive. I don't know the different degrees to which they're competitive, but that one in particular, I don't know, we have the director for the Athens County Economic Development Council. I don't know if Sarah Mars-Maxfield wants to go to the podium and talk at all to that, not to put you on the spot, Sarah. But she is our expert in this, so, thank you, Mr. Lockman.
Thanks, Sarah.
Dr. State, my address. Sarah Mars-Maxfield, 33 Warren Road, proud South Sider. The Economic Development and Public Infrastructure Program, my understanding is it's extremely competitive, and we've never applied, just because we haven't had everyone coalesce around one particular project that would be competitive. The money we've been able to access for economic development projects typically is tied directly to the business that has made some sort of a commitment to create jobs and make some capital investment in a location within the city or the county. So, to answer your question, you know, I'm certainly happy to follow up on that, to find out what types of projects have made it through in the last couple of rounds, but they're very, very competitive, and there's not, that's not a whole lot of money there to actually make something happen, and so the communities typically have to pitch in the lion's share, and that also has limited our ability to go after those kinds of funds.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll check into the allocation money, though, since it's kind of like, as long as it's eligible, you can get it, whether or not it can be used for, ultimately, a private endeavor that would create jobs.
Chris Schmuel, County Commissioner. I live out in Alexander Township, but I work uptown. And an idea about sidewalks, you may have heard about the Secretary of State coming to our Board of Elections and talking about accessibility, and, you know, some of the issues that he highlighted were in the city's right-of-way. I mean, as far as the sidewalk and the curb cuts that were not adequate for current ADA compliance, so, you know, we're trying to address the things that are in the county's, you know, property, et cetera, but that is actually something they brought up that's part of the city's property. And, you know, uptown, I don't believe there's any van accessible sites, at least on the street. That was something else that we talked about. So, that's potentially another idea for...
I don't think on Court Street. I think on other streets. I think on Washington Street, there's one, van accessible. That said, I mean, it's not say that we could realign an on-street parking space to make it van accessible.
Yeah, to jump into this, just to share with you, Commissioner, this is good, I think, for anyone who's viewing today to understand as well, is that we can placard a accessible parking space with van parking, but as my understanding is that you can't, you can't create a space that is only van parking, at this point in time anyway, in looking at the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It does have, it does speak to having a placard that says van accessible, but that you can't make it exclusive to vans, as I said, and have it become an enforceable parking space.
Make the space with the extra room for the lift, for the van, but if somebody's driving a Chevette and they have an accessible hangtag, they can park there, if it's a public parking.
Okay, just an idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone, anybody else like to speak?
So, I'm Rob Delak. Live at 124 Morris Avenue here in the city, and some of you know me as an advocate for pedestrian and accessibility issues in the city, and I think that some of the projects that have been discussed already sound like wonderful projects, they're needed, we need to look at our accessibility for those who lack mobility on their own and need assistance. And downtown, there are some issues, but moderately accessible issues on the west side, there's definitely major problems there. So, looking at those kind of projects, I think, is a good position to be in here. I think that's a good place to look. One thing I like about this approach is that small project can have a big impact when it comes to accessibility, and so I don't think any project is too small, and I think those incremental changes can make a difference. So, it's good, we'll do with what we can do.
Thank you.
Richard Lynn Scott. I live at 95 Central. I'm here representing the Athens West Side Community Association, so I just want to say I will be relaying all this information to them. We have a meeting next week, and we will talk about this. I guess my question would be, who, how do I follow up? Should I just follow up with this commission? Is there a point person on city staff that I should follow up with after this meeting, or...
Richard, you can follow up with me. I will likely be at the West Side Neighborhood Association meeting as well.
Oh, great. And I just want to say, I was really happy to hear the things Bob talked about. I know that those are things that are going to be the first things out of people's mouths. Crosswalks near Schaefer and near the west side, the west and Sider House, if the Connection Street does go through, continuing the sidewalk down to completely connect with the West State Tree Park, I think right now, like, the last block, if you are a pedestrian or a cyclist on the sidewalk, you're forced into the street, and so I think those are all things that are going to come up, but, yeah, thanks for doing this, and I will relay this to my neighbors, and we will get back to you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak?
My name is Zach Rizes. I live uptown at 17 West Washington Street. One thing that hasn't been mentioned today, but, you know, struck me, looking at the CDBG, different kinds of allocations, is the fact that, you know, potentially, the more competitive applications could also be used for, you know, purchasing of, I think it said, school or like, equipment. And I was wondering, while we're on the topic of accessibility and folks who don't have adequate transportation, whether there's any way to look at this funding as a way to support the broader kind of plan for more bus routes, bike lanes, you know, whether, I don't even know if that, it could be used to like, build a larger bus stop, right, as we're looking at, you know, more transportation throughout the county, but just that hadn't come up in conversation yet, and I thought that, you know, the city is at the heart of a broader economic development plan for the county, and this could be used in part and parcel with that kind of, you know, network. parcel with that kind of, you know, network building across the area, so.
Is there a particular location that you see a demand that's not met right now that this might fit?
Well, no, I'm not certain, but it hadn't come up in conversation that, you know, we're looking at bike lanes, sidewalks, I'm also thinking buses and even like, lift as it moves into the city, right, like more, looking at greater accessibility through or around it, I'm not sure, that just hadn't come up yet. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else?
Onto our meeting.
Onto.
Okay, we're going to proceed to our regular meeting, Ben. I'd like to really talk to the engineers, I'll be, should we give them a moment to clear the room? Okay, look at disposition of minutes on the 21st of February, it's been a long time. Anybody have an issue? With anything written? It's been a while.
I do not. I make a motion to adopt.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Three, zero. All right, and one abstention. Okay, then the next case, there are no cases, no communications. There was something at the end of the minutes that maybe we should take a look at. I'd like to see if we should, next meeting, start that through. Seemed like we talked about it a long time ago. This would be evaluating the process that we use for wireless telecommunications facilities. So could we put it on the agenda for next time to discuss it?
Absolutely.
So where did this come from? Did somebody, okay, you're going to talk about that in your...
So we could just probably move and then send it forward, since we've talked about it before. Okay. All the words you crossed out. Okay. All right, so then we're talking about communications, there are none, that I see. Now we're at the City Planner and the Director of the Code Office.
Thank you. So the first, my first item of discussion this afternoon, I did include in your packets some suggested revisions to Title 43 for Wireless Communications Facilities. If you recall, Planning Commissioners, I believe at the end of December of last year, there was a request, or maybe it was earlier, January or February, there was a request that we review sections specifically relating to modifications to existing facilities and co-locations on existing facilities to try to expedite the process so that the Planning Commission did not have to approve those, that the code director could approve those applications for modifications at existing facilities and co-locations on existing locations, but retaining the Planning Commission as the reviewing and approving body or denial body for new facilities such as new cell phone towers and things of that nature. So I took, I took what I felt, the only relevant sections of Title 43 that I believe applied here, and I included that section, which is 4307A, where it discusses who has what responsibilities. I tried to clean that up to moving, required, the permitting process still being in place, but the Director of Code Enforcement having the authority to approve modifications and co-locations on existing facilities. It's in Title 43, so it is not necessarily something the Planning Commission even needs to vote on, because it's not a zoning code change, but we, I think what we discussed was that if the Planning Commission thought this was sufficient or needed some modifications, then we can send it up to City Council and see if they're willing to shift that responsibility to the code director.
So let me ask, is anybody interested in discussing it further, or should we move to send it forward?
I think, I think we should just take some time to look through it, and then we'll bring it, then we'll bring it forward.
Okay, it'll be on the agenda next time.
And for those of you who are here, and anyone who's an addicted watcher of this particular Planning Commission meeting, or meetings, you know, the cell tower modifications, we see them a lot. A lot of them come to us, and as long as it's not a change in its footprint, or the change in the height, or a new cell tower facility, which then would trigger it coming before the Planning Commission, we often see just antenna modifications, so no, other than the antennas themselves, no structural change to these, so this would streamline that to where it doesn't necessarily have to come before this body, instead it would be, you know, handled through the Code Office, which is probably the more appropriate place when it's just these minor modifications to the towers.
So we'll discuss it on the agenda next time, Patty Gray. All right, now the Rex, what's the new guy's name? Lance, Lance Rex. Lance, welcome.
Thank you.
Maybe next time I'll have your name. Maybe I won't be doing it next time, that'll even be better.
Still, in the first weeks, nothing really to report that's going on.
You'll be on the hot seat next time, then. Thank you.
But we did, we did have, we want to talk about actually one cellphone modification to an approved change to a existing cellphone facility or cell tower, but Monticello, that was approved by the Planning Commission and signed off by the Chair in late December. We received communication, I think, earlier this week or late last week from that applicant. They wanted to make a slight change to that proposal, and there is actually nothing in our code that says how do we address that. They haven't done any of the work yet, they're basically moving, changing out some of the cabinetry at the base of the Monticello site. Lance and I did have a meeting about it, we discussed it, we reviewed it, the code, and it appears to us as if we can submit a letter saying that what they're doing is sufficient. It's actually making, they were going to add an additional carrier at that site, and that, they're no longer adding that carrier, so they needed to create cabinetry for the carrier, and they were adding an additional generator at the same time. What they're, what they're not doing is adding the new carriers facility at the base, so that'd be the box, but they are going to add the new generator, which was already approved, but they're moving it slightly from what was approved back in December. We did not think there was any issues with that, and we didn't think it made any sense for them to reapply. We haven't given them any directive yet, but we wanted to communicate that to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Modification to an approved project is how we're treating that.
And this is timely, given the previous item we were just talking about, to where it would fall squarely in the hands of the Director of Code Enforcement.
And we have a copy of their proposal, if anybody would like to review it.
Well, that's a connection. So we should wait till next time?
Mm-hmm.
We'll deal with it next time. Kick it can down the road.
I don't think we have to. I think you raised...
I don't think we have, I'm communicating...
We're going to win the process next time.
Yes, the process, yeah, the permit from December, I don't think we need to...
If you decide it's that way.
I think we can just keep moving forward with it.
Okay. Next, an opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered on the agenda. I forgot to administer the... That's what happens. Anybody wishing to speak?
Okay.
We have no requests to speak, so our next meeting is April 18th, and we've completed all the items on our agenda, and we stand adjourned.